This is the third Tuesday in the month Wapaka City Council meeting.
It is Tuesday, September 18th, 2018. It is 6:01 PM and I call this meeting to order. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And take roll for us too Sandy.
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porchatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Next item is the consent agenda. This is where we take all the items that are on the consent agenda and vote on those with one motion unless council or staff would like to see any item that's on the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda. This would be the time for you to tell us that you would like to see those moved. If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Porchatsky that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under the regular agenda, just have one change here, a little bit of a change here. Under nine, actually nine, 9F, we're going to move that up and replace. So we're going to move 9F up to D and then move E and, D and E down to E and F. Okay? Does that make sense? You just have to follow along anyway, so. All right? So we're just moving the one around. Anything else, council, that you would think that we need to change? If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve with that one change. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Olson that we approve the regular agenda with that one change. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a presentation of, by Wapaka chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby and we have Dr. Paul Sletton in the audience. Doctor, if you would, just step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. I know that he has a presentation, so Dave, do you mind shutting the lights down a little bit for us?
I think we may just need a minute to hook this up. But yes, I'm Dr. Paul Sletton. I live at 835 Buffalo Ridge Lane here in Wapaka. I've been a family physician here for eight and a half years. I am thrilled to be able to talk to you guys about something called Carbon Fee and Dividend. And I do have a PowerPoint and we're going to get that hooked up here in just a second. Thank you for the time. Citizens Climate Lobby is a 75,000-member group that is, I started the local chapter here 18 months ago. We've met every month since that time. The goal of the Citizens Climate Lobby is to make a more livable world. And we are completely nonpartisan. In our local chapter here, we have both conservatives and liberals and people of faith. I think personally that this is one of the real wonderful things that we can all do is work on something like the climate and challenge ourselves to listen to each other. And I think what's happened unfortunately is that we have blinders and we have emotions and we're very polarized. And so what's, the sad part of it is, is we're not getting things done. So, carbon fee and dividend. I really appreciate you guys listening to this. Many of you have heard of it, some of you have not. But our carbon fee and dividend, I guess I can open the PowerPoint. Can I have somebody advance this for me? So as I mentioned, I think I covered everything in the first slide. So I'm going to show a two-minute video about carbon fee and dividend and then I'll give you some details on it. The climate is changing. Extreme weather is disrupting livelihoods and food supplies around the world. This is observed. This is documented. This is the scientific community's consensus. The climate is changing. Carbon emissions are driving that change. Emissions come from burning fossil fuels. So if we want to slow or even reverse the change, we must lower our fossil fuel use. By charging a fee on fossil fuels and returning that revenue to households as a dividend, we can do just that, starting to achieve positive effects. Fossil fuels become less desirable. Cleaner sources of energy become more competitive. The dividend creates millions of jobs. Carbon emissions go down, reduced air pollution saves tens of thousands of lives, and climate change is brought under control. We can make this happen, but enacting a carbon fee and dividend isn't in our hands. It's in theirs. How do we sway them? What can we do? We can use our voices to express political will and demand action. We must help our elected leaders work together. It's on us to tell them what we want as a group. Because when voices call out together, their impact multiplies. Government can respond to the will of the people provided we tell the government what we want. And what we want is a livable world. This is what Citizens Climate Lobby works for, to empower citizens to connect with and influence their members of Congress, to spread the idea that each one of us can address climate change. Bring your voice to citizensclimatelobby.org. So, the interesting idea is carbon fee and dividend. So, we've all heard of carbon tax and there's been a lot of effort, you know, to try to determine how much CO2 coming out of the smokestack should be taxed. But what's interesting about carbon fee and dividend is that actually a fee, and here we go with this slide show, a fee is placed.
I'm going to go back.
That's right. Good. Okay, a fee is placed on the fossil fuels at the first point of sale. So the producers of the fossil fuel will be paying a tax. It starts at $15 per ton and this will require far less bureaucracy than pollution point factories monitoring enforcement which relies on the EPA. This is much, much more simple. Next slide. The dividend. Now, this is what's really different and I really appreciate everyone listening to this. I'll get through this very quickly. All of the net proceeds are then divided up and provided to American households equally per person as a monthly carbon dividend. So you would actually get a check in the mail and everyone would get the same amount. About 58% of taxpayers would receive more in their dividend payments than higher energy prices would cost them. Next slide. A border carbon adjustment, excuse me, is placed on carbon-intensive goods imported from, exported to countries without equivalent price on carbon. This adjustment discourages businesses from moving to more permissive regimes and encouraging other nations to adopt similar carbon pricing. So if you make widgets in Mexico and there is no price on carbon in that country and you try to import it into the United States, you would have to pay a tax. So if we don't act, we all know what's happening. The scientists, all, climate scientists all agree that we are experiencing human-powered climate change at this time. If we don't act, our grandchildren will be paying for this for generations. There is no new norm. So we may say, well, you know, there's wildfires and there's floods. Okay, so that's the new thing. We can adjust to that. But the truth is, there is really, this is not a norm. It's going to continue to change if we don't change what we're doing. So without a price on carbon, if we keep burning fossil fuel, we'll continue to experience this. Next slide. If we choose to act, we'll stimulate the economy. The carbon dividend, you see, is spent by consumers. So each consumer gets a monthly check and they can, they can put gas in their Hummer, they can pay for healthcare copays, they can do whatever they want with that money. And it is, again, an equal, an equal amount to each US citizen. If you have two children, they would qualify for half a dividend. So CO2 emissions declined by 33%. So there have been some studies to show what actually happens if you put this carbon tax on the producers. Of course, they will pass it right along to us, but we're getting checks every month to offset this. That's what the dividend is about. Next slide. Reduced air pollution. This is a huge passion of mine. So much asthma and lung disease aggravated by fossil fuel burning. The gross domestic product increases by 70 to 85 billion with a cumulative increase of 1.375 trillion over 20 years. The idea is that this, this carbon, this money that is generated is, actually goes back into the, into the economy. Things that are made with clean energy become much cheaper. Obviously fossil fuel becomes, products become more expensive. Things made with fossil fuel become more expensive. But relatively everything else becomes less expensive. You make it with clean energy. And this is not the government deciding which solar panel company gets a stipend or who, it doesn't decide who gets supported. It just lets the market decide. So this is why we have very, very conservative people. George Shultz, retired Secretary of State. George Shultz is an endorser and one of the advisors for Citizens Climate Lobby Board. There are conservatives who really like this because it's market-driven. It does not grow the EPA. It's what's considered a revenue-neutral tax or a revenue-neutral fee. So it passes through the government, the government then directly distributes it to the people. So that's what I really want the council to understand, is that this is, this is something that would not grow government. It would make a difference in climate change. It would. It would do that. And it really takes the, the government out of deciding who wins and loses. Obviously fossil fuel producers would be paying a tax and they would be, but all of the other types of clean energy would not be subsidized by the government. It would be basically people choosing how they're going to spend their dividend. Next slide. Again, national employment increases, more jobs. These, these are jobs that wouldn't happen without a carbon fee. In other words, you're collecting this fee, but you can, you can invest it in other form, in other jobs, in other development of other technologies. And one other thing I'll mention before I close is that this also, this also really does not decide who wins or loses. Next slide please. Could you skip this one in the interest of time and this one too? And skip that last one. I'm sorry, this is small, but this is the damages that the city of Madison, Wisconsin paid for in their last flood in August. And I know that the financial impacts of this are being felt everywhere. Next slide. I want to tell you about something. If you think this is all pie in the sky, it's not. On the national level, in the US House of Congress, the US Congress, there are 68 members of what is called a Climate Solutions Caucus. This was formed about two years ago, or about four years ago. It's a Noah's Ark principle. So in order to be on the Climate Solutions Caucus in the US House of Representatives, you have to have a member of the opposite party join with you. So a Democrat has to find a Republican. And then these folks on the Climate Solutions Caucus, they have not necessarily endorsed my, this proposal, carbon fee and dividend, but they are committed to working on environmental issues in a bipartisan way. And really that is, that is really my passion and I hope all of yours. Mike Gallagher was an early member and I've, I've met with him a number of times. I grew up a lifelong Democrat, but I have spent more time in Mike Gallagher's office about four times in the last year. And he's been very receptive and thoughtful about this. He's not endorsed carbon fee and dividend, but he is aware of it. Next slide. We're asking the council to adopt a resolution supporting national legislation that would act, enact a carbon fee and dividend. Stevens Point and Madison have adopted similar resolutions and sent their letters to congressmen and senators. So really, that's why I'm here. We know that if congressmen and legislators hear about things like carbon fee and dividend, hear that, yes, people are really wanting to do something and they want to do something meaningful. If they hear about that, they're more likely to, much more likely to act. So a letter from the Wapaka City Council to congressmen and senators would have a much more impact than just a few voices. Thank you for your time. I think I've went over, but I appreciate your willingness to listen to this and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Dr. Sletton? We actually have this as a resolution to discuss and to vote on, under, it's the first item under New Business, so although we took the presentation now, we have some other items we need to go through first before we get back to this item, so that will give you all an opportunity to think and decide on that.
Excuse me, I do have a question.
What are you handing?
Just some things from Paul.
What are they, Paul?
It's just, it is a.
Just the slides?
Parts of the slides. And we can pass them out later. There's thank you notes in there.
No, no, you can hand them out now. We usually get permission beforehand though. I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I may, I have a question. Who would you anticipate paying this dividend? Would it be a government agency? Right. There is actually proposed legislation that is quite detailed. It hasn't been introduced into the Congress yet, but actually it would be, go through the Internal Revenue Service. So the Internal Revenue Service would be responsible for distributing the monthly dividend, monthly dividend checks. So that would be part of the 2.1 million jobs that are created out of this? Would be done through the Internal Revenue Service. That'd have to be added staff, I would think. Sure, sure. It would, yeah, it would certainly need to be funded. But the idea of a revenue-neutral tax is that it doesn't, it doesn't grow the government. It doesn't grow the EPA. It just, it would be, it would be a pass-through and it certainly would need to be administrative costs to, to do that. But it, it appears that the easiest way to do it is through the Internal Revenue Service and through direct, direct deposit. And the fee would be collected as close to the producer as possible is what you're saying? So coal mines and oil fields and so on? And fossil fuel importers, sorry, the microphone. People who import or companies that import fossil fuel into the country would be paying. And what I didn't mention is that each year the, the fee would get higher. So initially $10 a ton, but each year that fee would increase. And, but in a very predictable way. So employers could see, okay, at this rate, in five years, it will make sense for me to switch completely over to solar power for whatever it is that I need to do. So conservatives like this because it is, it is predictable and, and isn't all of a sudden a sudden burden on companies or employers.
Lori, go ahead.
My question would be, Dr. Sun, does this change climate control back or would the, would the climate change back to a better quality with this?
Yes. There is a Remy household study that shows that if, with this kind of negative incentive, and of course it would be a negative incentive on burning fossil fuel, that CO2 levels would decline very significantly over the next 20 years, almost to 1990 levels. So there has been, and I'm happy to give you any details, any of the council wants details, I can give you the, that, that study, but that was performed in 2014. So yes, it would, it would definitely lower CO2 production in a very major way. And I think that's what gets me out of bed in the morning. I've been anxious and nervous and depressed about the climate for 20 years. I practiced in, in Alaska. And, and I think this gives me some hope that working together, you can actually make a difference in, in the, in the climate. And so that's why, that's why I'm promoting the concept. So, and the other part before I close is just, I think what's so important is that we have to focus on something that we can do. And if I can do anything tonight, it's say, could we please debate something like this from both the conservative and liberal standpoint so that we get something done? I think this is a great opportunity. Is it perfect? No. Is it a first step, a meaningful first step? Yes, it is. Does it have bipartisan support? Yes. 68 members of the House of Representatives have agreed to work on climate together, Republicans and Democrats. And to me, that is how we save the, save the future.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next on our agenda is actually the public input part of our meeting. This is for any citizen or staff or council member that like, would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item. If you are interested, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record and limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. Any public input. Seeing done, we'll move on to department heads' reports. And as always, at the second meeting in September, we like to have our department heads update our council members on what's going on throughout the community. So we'll start with our finance director, Kathy Kaza.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I didn't have a memo in this report in the packet, but I'm doing what I usually do at this time of year, working on the budget. We'll have the capital requests are due from the departments next week. And then we'll have a committee of the whole meeting on October 2nd to go over the requests on the capital improvement budget. And then I will probably be bringing the 2018 two-year note to council for the purchases of the equipment that we did during the year to do a borrow from the state trust fund. But otherwise, they don't have anything else.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Any questions, comments for Kathy? All right, let's move on to the library. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Well, our library's working on the budget. We will be taking a draft library budget back to our board tomorrow night and we're hoping that it passes at that time. We are in the process of hiring a new exhibit room coordinator as Brigid Forcat is leaving our employ. We have a new class called Basic Computers and it is a learn-at-your-own-level class on Wednesday mornings at 10 o'clock. And we do ask that you register. We can take 10 at a time. And the classes have filled up, so that's a good thing. We also have a new civil discussion series. It starts next Tuesday night. And this is really, how do we talk to people about difficult topics and, and keeping civility in mind and good listening skills. And so the very first discussion will be understanding civil discussion. And then that'll continue the next couple of months. We also have a First Thursday Classic Film on October 4th. And we're going to have a creature feature with Bride of Frankenstein. So I hope you'll join us at 1:30 that day. Also, on October 5th, we have Healthy Aging, which is a program that allows you to explore some of those ideas as you age. Talking Books and Braille Library will be having a Caregivers Coalition. Council will be there as well as Brain Games on some devices. So if you want any of those details, you can look on our website. We also have a lunch and learn for October 9th. We're walking the Ice Age Trail with somebody who's done that, an author is coming forward. And that is sponsored by the Betty Anderson Memorial Fund. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Peg. Any questions, comments? All right, let's move on to Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, my report's on page 56. So the packet is updated on our brand and wayfinding study. We are, I believe I sent everyone out last week an email from the recap video from the consultant's first trip. So that was pretty neat to see. And that's been posted on our social media pages along with our city website page dedicated to the wayfinding study. Currently working with them on their second trip, which they're targeting at the end of October to come back up for another visit to see us in the fall time and do some public meetings and outreach for that project. There will be a survey coming out here shortly that we will be incentivizing. We've been able to work with the local hotels here along with the local restaurants to provide a free night's stay and gift certificates for anyone that participates in the survey. They'll be putting a random drawing for that. So be on the lookout shortly for that project. Main Street and City Hall, we'll be talking about that later tonight. And just want to update on our projects in the city. The county shop will be starting construction most likely next week, working through the finer details on that project. Dollar General is definitely under construction right now. And our apartment project in Stormwater Pond will be under construction starting next week. We are going, we are working through the final insurance issues right now for that project, but we'll start seeing construction out there next week. And looking forward, we'll be, there'll be a little bit of change in the department. We've been able to utilize Jerry Dooman from the fire department as our electrical inspector and we've been very fortunate for that. But with the magnitude of projects that we have coming on board here shortly, Jerry and I had, that was kind of an interim process. So we will be bringing on the new electrical inspector. There are some state requirements coming in 19 that we have to uphold as well. So that'll be a change within the department shortly. And that'll be based upon per inspections for that. So that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Brennan. Any questions, comments for Brennan? All right, let's move over to our Director of Public Works, Justin Behrens.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My packet starts on page 58, leads into 59, and then I have an attachment after that. And as usual, starting on the wastewater side, I think it's probably pertinent to note tonight, the Algo Group, the Algo Ma Algo Group, I'm not sure how much I've talked about this at this level, but basically it's a group that has met with us and the foundry on a project to basically sequester or remove CO2 from the atmosphere. I think that's, segue is pretty good from an earlier presentation. Anyways, Jesse from our treatment plant met with this group and the foundry. And they are starting a pilot study at Wapaka. are starting a pilot study, Ethopac of Foundry, where they would take CO2 emissions and grow algae. Basically, the algae would take CO2 and other nutrients out of it and make that algae into other byproducts, which hopefully they could then profit on. So very interesting, cutting-edge project that we're kind of excited to be a part of. Also, the treatment plant, working on a lot with Focus on Energy. We will be starting a project pretty soon where Focus on Energy will be funding 90% of a study of our treatment plant and lift stations on how we can reduce our energy consumption, and of course, then that leads to cost. So what we're hoping to see from this project is identifying future projects where we can then prioritize and then rearrange our capital funding and, of course, lower our energy usage and costs in our budgets. Speaking of Focus on Energy, the attachment I have on page 60 is a pamphlet or flyer that they are using as an advertisement of a success story using the FOCUS program. It is our aeration blower, a new one that we installed in 2016, and it was such a successful project, and we should be seeing payback on that blower from our energy savings by the end of next year. And because of that, we are looking at improving our aeration basin system even further. We plan on replacing another blower and upgrading that. We moved that up in our capital plan. We had that three years out. We moved it up till next year because we feel that confident in these projects and what they will pay off for our plant. Moving on to street, as Brennan mentioned, we will be talking later about the flashing pilot. City Hall Square, construction is still on track. We've gotten some bad weather this week. It's kind of slowed us down. Rain is in the forecast for the rest of the week. We are planning on paving the entire lot next week, Monday, and then we will be striping it Tuesday morning. Now, that's the plan right now. And the whole square will be shut down to traffic for all of Monday into Tuesday until we get done striping it. We cannot open it without the paving markings on it. So the whole square will be shut down for at least a day and a half next week. The Signal project at the base of US 10 ramp, that's going on. There was some comments on the traffic control being so long. That's a necessity in order to properly control the traffic and reduce any conflicts out there. So just bear with that project for a little longer. It will be done before the end of October. And up on Highway 10, there's drums up there as well. That is the median barrier improvement. They're putting some cable guard up there, and that's a safety project to prevent the crossover accidents, which would be head-on and very dangerous and usually fatal. We sold our old plow truck for $22,000. It was a positive, a little bit more than we were expecting. The Arch Bridge by Bethany is open, so no longer using Evan Street as a detour route. Waterside Wells 3 and 6 are both offline right now. We are working on those and that rehab. We have confidence that our water supply, though, is still strong because we did a recent study that shows that we can handle that capacity. Hydrant flushing will be starting up soon, so the week of September 23rd through the 28th, we'll be flushing hydrants throughout the city. And then again, on October 1st through the 5th. So discoloration, some cloudiness, lack of pressure is kind of expected and happens during this when they are flushing. So if you do see that, flush your water inside your house, your tap a little bit longer before you start drinking or cooking from it. If there are prolonged issues, feel free to call the water department, and we will troubleshoot and help you through those sort of issues. Went Drive Railroad Crossing is finally complete. That was done a couple weeks ago. It rides really smooth. And Russ is all about trees this last month. He submitted two tree grants, that Great Lakes Basin, which we talked about last year, ATC, which is one that we were awarded a couple years ago, and he's also reviewing the dead, dying and diseased trees within the city now. So other than that, we're just working on our budgets and our capital planning.
Thank you, Justin. Any questions or comments for Justin? All right, let's move on to our Parks and Rec Director, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, just a couple things tonight. Starting in our parks, we had our annual Friends of Wapaka Parks fundraiser this last weekend called Fallarama. Hopefully, some of you were able to come down and check that out. Excuse me. We use that as a fundraiser, as I said, for our Friends of Wapaka Parks. It's essentially a big craft fair, but we do have a lot of support from the community. I know the fire department was there, of course. Falk's Brother was there with some of their big trucks. The Senior Center was involved. We had a petting zoo from the FFA, so a lot of community support there, and it was a good atmosphere, other than the mosquitoes, of course. But they did well, and everything went smoothly, so we'll continue to do that. I think it's good for the community to have events like that. So if you didn't get, check it out this year, come on out next year as well. The Serenney Park Boardwalk project that we're working on has been kind of pushed off until the spring, not on our accord. Wiscorp wrote and said that they did not have enough help this fall to accomplish it. And then the next weekend, I think the person I had been connecting with left Wiscorp and setting up with somebody new. So we're going to make sure that that gets done appropriately and gets done right. So we're going to be kind of first on their list in the spring. Townships, I've been meeting with the townships. Dayton was already on the third year, if you remember, some of the things that Aaron had been working on as far as moving up with the township agreements, the youth township agreements. Town of Wapaka has agreed to that third-year level with me, and so we'll be working on their contract with them. And Farmington, we're still working with some of their options that they want to try to figure out and move towards. So we'll continue to work with them and try to come up with a solution to make sure that the youth are participating in our programs from the area. As far as rec goes, this is a busy time for us. Cassandra, our new rec supervisor, is working on a lot of different things for youth. We have flag football going, we have youth volleyball, we have kids chess. For adult, we have coed and women's volleyball, as well as pickleball for adults. We have the Halloween party coming up that they're working on already. That's one of our major events that we have with the most people that come in and a lot of support for the community, so that's already starting. Downstairs in the Senior Center, Sarah is working on another fundraiser. That is going to be on Saturday, September 29th. They're going to have an auction. They already have over 40 donations, I guess you'd consider them, from local businesses. They have furniture, they have kayaks, they have all sorts of new and good things to bid on. So they're going to have a showing at 9:00, and then the bidding will start at 10:00. So if you're interested in any of those things, and you want to come support the Senior Center, that's Saturday, September 29th. This is also a time of year where they'll start adding new classes. So they have two new classes starting here very shortly in conjunction with the ADRC. One is Stepping On, which is a balance and falls type of class, and then a Living Well class, which covers all the different aspects of living well. And this will be the second time they've run in, and it was very successful the first time. I think people are interested in that at any age, so that's what we have going on.
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Any questions, comments for Andrew? All right, let's move to, we got Sergeant Helgerson here tonight for us. Chief Ozel is on vacation, so.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report starts on page 32 of your packet. It includes a speed report. We put a speed sign on Churchill Street near the school zones there to alleviate any speeding problems. We also have extra patrol in the area. The average daily volume for that five days from September 6th through September 11th was 3,458 vehicles, average speed of 26 miles an hour approximately. We move this around wherever we feel there is a problem. We also have been doing some extra patrols at the old school business office building that now has been taken over by the Alternative Program for Students. The students there range from seven years old to 18 years old and have one staff member per three students. We do do random checks, as I said there. We also have some information on random tobacco checks at businesses in the town. The compliance checks were completed by Community Action for Healthy Living. They serve Brown, CaliMet, Otagamee and Wapaka County. We're happy to report that there were 13 retailers that were checked, and all 13 of them passed with no violations. There is an attachment showing that the other communities that were checked also in their results. We've also been notified of some ongoing problems with semi-drivers in the residential areas. We've tried to work with those businesses, and I know Justin sent out a letter with a map showing the truck routes, so hopefully that solves that. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Helgi. Any questions or comments? All right, let's move to IT and Wapaka Online. Or whatever your name is. Josh. Thanks. I'm sorry, Josh.
Okay. We're moving along on the phone system project. I've got an RFP ready to go. They'll be getting out this week, vendors, and posting on the website, and we'll see what comes back. A precursor to that project is getting this building rewired so that we're ready to accept a new phone system. So that work will begin probably as early as next month, but over the next couple months. Put in a new firewall here for our main city network a couple weeks ago. That's been working well. That's a nice upgrade. Put in a new fixed wireless link between this building and the rec center, tripling our bandwidth capacity between these two buildings, so it allows files to transfer quicker back and forth, and that will play a role in with the new phone system. That's been working pretty well, working with some newer technology on that. Had a couple, as of today, up to three staff resignations in the past two weeks, so we'll be interviewing a couple candidates and getting things back on track with that. And the Wapaka Online Expansion Project, we've got, give or take, about 25 new customers so far in our expansion area. We've got eight POPs, and we're working on one more that we'll be doing in the next couple of weeks here, so that project is moving along. And we're going to try to get a little more done before the winter and then pick up in full force again on that next spring. So that's all I've got.
All right. Thanks, Josh. Questions? I do. On page 64 of your report, Josh, I didn't fully understand what that was. That's the map of Wisconsin with the several cities listed?
That's part of our website statistics, so that just shows around the state where people are located that are viewing our city websites. That just gives, kind of shows what other areas of the state people are looking at on our cityofwapaka.org website.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, I toss that in. It doesn't change too often. Every couple times a year, I'll toss in with the stats just to show where people are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right, with the absence of Henry, I think you're all aware that Henry actually had knee surgery yesterday. I think he had knee replacement surgery, if I remember right, and I have not heard from him, but we'll try to keep you updated. But in his place, we have Sandy, who is going to give us some comments.
I just wanted to inform the public that I have received my absentee ballots, so if anybody is so inclined to absentee vote for the November 6th general election, stop down and see me. That's all I wanted to say.
We should probably have Sandy take care of Henry's part more often.
It's not as long.
All right. Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate it. Any questions, comments? All right, let's move on to new business. We actually have that Resolution Number 1417. This is a resolution requesting Congress to enact a revenue-neutral fee on carbon in fossil fields. And this was presented by Dr. Paul Slutton earlier in our meeting. Discussion, council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Whitman, that we approve of Resolution Number 1417. Discussion?
Mayor, in the years that I've been here, we've always shied away from these type of resolutions involving national issues. And I can only remember maybe less than a handful of times that this has come up, and each time it's been stated that we really, you know, a little town in central Wisconsin isn't, a resolution isn't going to matter much, if at all, and we've generally stuck to issues that directly affect the city and the city government. So for that reason, I'll be voting no.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, Sandy will call the roll.
Laurie Chestnut?
Yes.
Paul Hagan?
No.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Scott Porczewski?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
And Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right, let's move on to the updated Election Day Emergency Response Plan, and Sandy, you're back on here.
As I mentioned in my memo, this is an updated version. The last one we had approved by council was in 2007, and this just adds some more items that were not addressed at that time, like an active shooter, a workplace violence, different things that weren't included. The Elections Commission requested that we, every community, adopt a more modern version. So this is all it does is update it. And I need your approval.
So in our packet here, the...
Is the updated version.
Is the updated version. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the updated Election Day Emergency Response Plan. Discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Sandy, could you describe for us what kind of training the election workers receive in regard to this?
Well, they've all received a copy of our prior plan, and they will receive a copy of this plan. And before the election, we have the workers come in at least a half an hour earlier. We're going to go over it with them. They'll know what their job is, what the duty is, and what they need to do if something should arise.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Most of our election workers are veterans of many, many elections, too, right? So they...
And my chief election inspector's in the audience, and she's a veteran.
In many ways. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, let's move on to the Wapaka Community 4H Program request to use City Hall Library front lawn for a small petting zoo and dog training demonstration in conjunction with the Wapaka Saturday's farmer market on Saturday, October 6, 2018, and Saturday, October 13, 2018. Bridget is here? She's not here. Okay.
She couldn't be here tonight. I will just say that the request is in your packet. They are asking just to be a part of that farmer's market with some special activities for families, and we hope that you'll approve that for October 6 and 13.
You know, some of this, so their request is to just have a small petting zoo and training demonstration. I mean, it's probably similar to what we had down in Rotary Riverview Park, where we had the small petting zoo down there, and cleanup was fairly easy to clean up down there, if you're concerned about that. And I mean, I think this is actually one addition to bring people down to the farmer's market. So I... So I actually think it's probably a good idea to do this. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve this.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the request of the Wapaka Community 4-H Program for a Small Petting Zoo and Dog Training Demonstration on both Saturday, October sixth, and Saturday, October thirteenth. Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried.
Thank you.
You threw me for a loop there. Peggy said she was going to be here. So, License Report Number fourteen nineteen is an operator's license. That's on page one thirty of your packet. That's the one item that we moved around. So you see the license report, there's two names on there. Again, they're always pending background checks and make sure that they don't owe the city any money or have any fines. So we'd be looking for a motion to approve Operator's License fourteen nineteen. Motion by Keeland, second by Whitman, that we approve License Report fourteen nineteen.
That was Peterson, I think.
Okay.
It's okay.
Peterson, yeah. You two sound alike.
I didn't say a word.
Well, you smiled and I didn't see it. Keeland, Peterson, all right? Are we okay with that?
Aye.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, let's move back then. We're going to go to Contract for Professional Design Services for the Danes Hall. Brennan, you're up.
It's going to be a joint effort here. So Mayor, with your permission, there's two action items underneath the council, the Danes Hall contract, and then also the conversation about the City Hall and Library Square, the street layout and the parking layout. So we'd like to kind of talk about both of those. We do have Randy Sanford here this evening from S E H who will be helping with the presentation, but we would like to start with the Danes Hall proposal. And I do have Mike Kohler here this evening as well, who is the owner of the Danes Hall, to answer any questions that the council may have. So the first item on the agenda this evening is the design services for the Danes Hall. And we're bringing this project forward as it's a continuation of our efforts in and around downtown and also the Rotary Riverfront Plan. If council members, we approved, or the council approved a master plan in two thousand and seventeen for the reconstruction of Main Street and the streetscape plan, and then earlier this year, you approved the Rotary Riverview Park Plan Update. And both of those design efforts took a look at work that was going to be done hopefully down by the Danes Hall. We were very fortunate to have an individual or a family that has local ties to the community that is investing in our community and our downtown to renovate the Danes Hall. And there's always been conversations with our, with the project and between Main Street and the park plan about what happens at the terminus of North Main Street. You can see here, this is an exhibit from the park plan update. We were looking at the possibility of having some form of a public plaza on the north end in conjunction with the Danes Hall. It could be a spillout area as a possibility. Some of the functions that are going to go into Danes Hall is going to be, I believe, still a coffee shop and a bakery in the lower floor, along with some event space on the main level and upper level. And then also on the north end, we have to start taking a look at, you know, what is going to happen in and around this area. Again, we're only focusing around the Danes Hall and the, and this intersection here. One of the reasons why we're bringing it up this evening is there's some outdated right-of-way out there that we need some identification on. There's also, because of the shift in the road to try to realign Water Street and Main Street to slow the traffic down, that is what's pursuing us to look at this project as well, along with, and we'll get into it a little bit later as well. When we did the traffic study as part of the two thousand and sixteen study with S E H and the traffic study, we identified actually that this intersection is a possibility for a proposed four-way stop. And again, that was in conjunction with our, the traffic study. That was required as part of our application for our Main Street reconstruction. What we're seeking this evening is kind of a phase one or phase two, of two phases for this project. And what's triggering this as well is, in working with the utility companies up here along with Justin's department, we have some utility coordination that needs to be taken care of up here. There is additional power needs, I need to get into this individual building. There's also needs for gas that has to get into this building and where those utilities are currently located and where they need to be rerouted towards. We need to have some conversations about what happens at the end of Main Street. Again, there is right-of-way that goes up here and ties into this alley or roadway right here. On this plan, it looks at the concept that's being drawn, is the possibility of vacating some of this right-of-way right here and doing a spillout space, along with creating some ADA access into the building and into the park. So what happens with the possibility of creating a terminus at the end of that? So that's what is driving some of this need for this project. We've been in discussions with Mike for the last couple of months, actually, probably since earlier this year, about the possibility of a joint partnership with this. We are looking to engage the services of S E H as part of this project, since they are, they have done a significant amount of surveying work for this project, along with they are the design engineers for Main Street. We felt it was beneficial that, to engage them, hopefully to look at the space, provide options to the city about the possibility of vacating the right-of-way and what options we have for maybe creating a terminus at the end of the road back here as part of this project, along with the concepts and designs for a public plaza at the end of North Main Street. Randy or Mike, if either one of you guys would like to fill in about this project?
So, good evening. I'm Mike Kohler. I'm one of the, I'm the primary owner of Danes Hall. And so thank you for having me here tonight and listening to what I say. First of all, I'd like to start by saying that I've never, I am not a historic restoration person. I did this because in my heart, our family loves Wapaka. It's our history here. We just have a passion for the town, the history, and our ancestors. I'm a fifth-generation person. I don't live in Wapaka. I lived down in Illinois. My family lives up here. But I'm a fifth generation and my children are the sixth generation to have walked through Danes Hall. That's why it is so important to me, this building. We bought it two years ago and we started restoration on it a year ago in August. And it seems to be going slow. And it's going slow because we're trying to coordinate with a lot of people. National Park Service, Wisconsin Historical Society, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Wisconsin Department of Safety and Professional Services, the citizens of Wapaka, who we've talked to many times, as well as Public Works here, and Brendan Kane from Wapaka. And I have to say first, this group of people and these organizations have been extremely cooperative with us, unbelievably cooperative for a project like this, because I think everybody wants to make this building come back to life. I want to give you just a brief, where are we on this project? I have a target date to finish it, and that's November twenty-ninth. November twenty-ninth, a hundred and twenty-four years ago, was Thanksgiving Day, and that was the opening day of Danes Hall in eighteen ninety-four. This year, November twenty-ninth is not Thanksgiving Day. It is a Thursday, but it is not Thanksgiving Day because Franklin Roosevelt moved the date up to the fourth Thursday instead of the last Thursday, so we can actually celebrate Thanksgiving. And then the next week, we can celebrate maybe opening of Danes Hall. So that's our target. And that's the first question people always ask me when I come to town, is when are we going to open? That's the date. It has been a journey for me. I have given several invited talks throughout the state of Wisconsin on this building, and so people are learning not only about the building, but about Wapaka. In the process, the history of Wapaka and how it started many years ago. The property that Brendan is talking about is actually not part of Danes Hall, is outside Danes Hall, most of it is city property. But it is as historic, that piece of property is as historic as the hall itself, because it's right next to that in those craggy rocks that form the end of the Wolf River Batholith, that granite wedge that comes down off that hill. And the river spills down about thirty to forty feet from the top of the dam down to the basin there. So it's a huge drop. It's actually a very significant geological formation that ends right there at that site. But that was where the first settlers actually came to Wapaka. And that's in those rocks, you'll read the first settlers, they call it the Vermonters Camp, was right in those craggy rocks that built to lean to and spent their first nights in this area. And that's why it's so historic. And I think that as much as I'm trying to preserve the history of the building, I'm also interested in seeing what we can do to understand and preserve and have people hang out in that beautiful area next to it. I believe the gardens are probably one of the most beautiful gardens in the city. Give credit to my cousin Diane Sorensen, her gardens up there and keeps those. But as we progress in the project and we get our move forward and we take a few steps back as we learn about the roadblocks we get, we have to bring power and we have to bring gas into that building. We talked to the power utility companies, they have their plan. But it's important, and this is why I've been talking to Brendan, I think it's very important that we do this right. I can bring power and electricity in that building by just telling them to drill through the granite and put the power in. But we've got to understand where the roads are going to go. We've got to understand what's going on in the parks. We've got to understand that whole area so we can preserve it and not screw it up and we're not have to redo it. And so in talking with Brendan, I said that, you know, if we want to develop a plan and do it together, we would split the cost on the original plan. So that's, so we are, from Danes Hall, willing to split the cost with the city on this if the city agrees to develop it. I can't execute the plan because it's not my property, but I'm willing to contribute to the development of the plan for that. So any questions, I'll be happy to take them, but I'll turn it over to Randy.
Thanks, Mike. Brendan and Mike came to me a few months back and asked what it would take to kind of look at this site. And the first thing I looked at is a great public-private opportunity for some development at the end of your Main Street. That opportunity is in front of you. I think, as Mike put it nicely, there's a lot of public space opportunity there in front of Danes Hall that is immediately adjacent to the Danes Hall, which could be just a spectacular piece for people to walk and use your downtown Main Street. Like Brendan said, the reason he came to me initially was we are currently in the middle of a thirty to sixty percent design of the Main Street project, of which you guys have embarked on over the last three years, so that's been a major component. The other entity that's complex here is DOT, and Mike mentioned a lot of other complexities that he's been dealing with. So there are some opportunities here. What I've done from an engineering perspective is put together what is considered a conceptual design to get to some public-private concepts. We've also put together in that conceptual design what it would take to do some surveying around there, identify the boundaries of what the city owns and what Danes Hall owns so that it's clear where most of the development is going to happen. Right now, this concept is not really clear where the property lines are at and who owns what, and if it's actually vacated and things can be built on it. So there's some investigative work that needs to happen first before you can do anything on that property. So for you tonight is a proposal from us to do that first step of what Brendan announced as a kind of a two-phase process. We wouldn't go any farther than the first phase because we don't really know what's going to be on there. It's kind of a visioning process with you all here and with the private owners, so that's the public-private partnership that I think you want to get into. So for your consideration tonight, we have, for your review, the first phase of this project under consideration. So with that, I'll take any questions, or Mike or Brendan I can answer.
So, as you see in your packet, and what they're requesting is, is that we enter into an agreement with S E H Engineering to do this professional design services, and it will be done by S E H Engineering. The total cost is nineteen thousand nine hundred, of which the city would be responsible for nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars of that. Am I right?
That is correct.
Okay. So we'd be looking for a motion if you like the idea. Motion to approve this?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayo, second by Fair, that we approve of the joint partnership with the Danes Hall and the City of Wapaka and hire S E H Engineering to do some professional design services at a cost of nineteen thousand nine hundred, with the city's cost being no more than nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Any discussion?
Where does this money come from? What fund?
There is residual funds from the bridge work that was done on Highway E. We budgeted a certain amount and we didn't use all of it. So the nine thousand nine hundred and fifty would come from there.
Cool.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, Sandy, a caller roll?
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Porczalski?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
And Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Mike, thank you. Randy, thank you very much. But Mike, thank you very much. I had the opportunity to talk to him up in the hallway upstairs and talk a little bit about history of Wapaka. He really is really interested in Wapaka and the history of Wapaka, so appreciate that, especially for a guy that's lived in Chicago or in Illinois his whole life. Not Chicago, but Illinois his whole life. So thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, let's talk about, and this was put on here for council to have the ability to discuss. We're getting near the end of the City Hall parking lot, public road, you know, East Fulton Street, Union Street, Jefferson Street, and the parking lot that's behind the Library City Hall building. So we thought we would open it up for council members to have the opportunity to discuss things. Do you want to set this up first, or Brendan, or...
Yep. So it is in your packet, you know, but we also have it up on the screen behind you just so that we can, for the conversations. And Randy is also here as the design engineer for any technical questions that may be present. But as the mayor mentioned, we wanted to, and Justin earlier this evening, the intention is to final, or to pave the final portion of the project next week, Monday, and that would include the final lift of asphalt for the entire project. When we opened up Phase One of the project for, and we temporarily striped the parking, there were definitely some concerns that were brought forward by council members along with the public regarding the new alignment and the new layout that's being proposed out there. So we were, during that last council meeting, we did at least open up the, if people had comments or concerns, at least stop in to see myself or Justin during the process. We did have some individuals that have come in regarding the project, and I would say that it's both positive and negative regarding the layout. It is a change, and I think that's the first thing that we need to look at, that this is definitely a change from what it was beforehand, from angled parking to head-in parking. You know, the goal of this project, again, if we go all the way back to when we adopted the master plan in seventeen and we started this process, was with the redesign and reconstruction of Main Street in twenty-one, we are going to lose around thirty to forty parking stalls along Main Street because of the realignments that need to occur, the pedestrian elements that need to be, and safety enhancements that need to be done as part of our approval of the DOT to maintain angled parking on Main Street. So we are going to lose some parking stalls out there. So we, working with our consultants, identified this project as one to move forward with ahead of time to create additional parking in and around City Hall and Library area and provide parking where, you know, a lot of the parking is needed. In order to achieve that is, you know, that was a reorientation of the parking from angle that's on East Fulton Street and a reorientation of the parking within the... that's on East Fulton Street and a reorientation of the parking within the parking lot area and Jefferson Street. Union Street still maintains the same layout as previously. We were able to achieve that because of the width that we had within the road. The travel lines are the same as what they were previously. They are twelve-foot travel, travel lines, that's, that's what they were previously. The curb lines are in the exact same spot or within six inches of where they were before. So one of the main concerns we have heard is how narrow it is, and I think that's a sign of disperception. It, it does look narrow as you drive through there. Again, it is a change in how parking was laid out on East Fulton Street previously, but the parking stalls do meet DOT standards and for road layouts along with parking layouts as well. And again, the overall project for this, you know, it does add about thirty additional parking stalls in and around this project. Within the packet, we provided a couple of options for the council to consider this evening, and I guess I'll open it up if Justin has anything else or Randy would like to fill in.
Justin?
I think you pretty much covered it.
Randy, any comments so far? Okay. Counsel?
Question. Option two, you talk about eliminating approximately twelve plus or minus stalls. That's twelve from the thirty?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and there, and one of the concerns we had is, there were some concerns that people felt that the parking stalls were too narrow. And the parking stalls are minimum nine-foot width, and that's what, that is what's permitted by DOT. You know, we have gone around and looked at some other parking lots that are laid out. I, I was up at Swan Park the other day, those lots, those parking stalls are nine feet as well. I think where we're, you know, where the challenge is a little bit is, you know, the, the length of the line is not as long as it is up at Swan Park or other areas. The length here, we took in account that there would be bumper or car overhang over the sidewalk, and that's why the striping on East Fulton Street is actually at sixteen feet. A normal parking stall is nine by eighteen, so in the center area of the, of the parking lot and part of Jefferson Street, those, those are actually marked at nine by eighteen, but anything that is abuts a sidewalk is actually sixteen-foot. It still meets standards. But again, we were compensating for the overhang of a car, which typically happens when people drive up to a, a parking stall. People will stop when their front tires hit or their back tires hit the curb. So that's why, one of the challenges, why I think it's also narrower right now, is because people are hitting that first curb and they're not actually hitting the full curb. So once the final paving is done, you will gain probably about another foot of width perception-wise as you're driving through that area. And one of the things that, you know, I wanted to address, I know I've spoken to the mayor and staff as well, is I think, you know, this is a change, and I think, you know, human nature will come into effect here that not everyone's comfortable where, where people park all the time. I think that happens when you're, whether you're at a shopping center, whether you're at city hall or any other location, even on Main Street. People feel comfortable parking where they are, and I think this project, and I think the reconstruction of Main Street in twenty-one, will provide multiple options for people to park where they feel most comfortable in those stalls. But Alan, to answer your question, yes, if we, we could widen those stalls to a nine-foot six or maximum ten-foot, but that would lose stalls that we were looking to gain as part of this project.
Other, Scott?
I guess I must say from my perspective, we were trying to create the most enhanced environment for our downtown businesses, and I think if we, by eliminating some of these parking stalls we're going to have to do on Main Street, I, I think we should try to provide just as many as we can on this block around our, our library. So I guess I'd, I'd like to see us stay with the thirty because we're pro-business here. That's, that was our focus, and I, I don't want to eliminate parking spaces for their potential customers.
Good.
Okay. I was approached and, and asked to remember, you know, ADA compliance. So I did do a little homework on it, and if you went to the ten-foot, you would, that would certainly always accommodate any of the recommendations. I had a chance to show Justin prior to the meeting, and I'm sorry that I couldn't get here earlier, but I had a chance to show him, and I will give you that information, but that's laid out, and I'm, and I'm wondering where are we at with that? How much consideration is given to that? Because if I'm approached, other people are thinking about it also.
Sure, I can address that during design. All municipalities, state agencies, federal agencies are required to meet ADA, American Disability Act requirements. So what you have in your hand is exactly what we've used. That's not a requirement for all of the, the, the parking stalls. What that's a requirement for is a certain number of stalls to be ADA accessible, accessible now. The, the areas in front where you see it marked on the plan, those are and do meet those accessibility requirements, along with curb cuts and along with less than five percent slopes so that any, any special needs can access from one of those vehicles, whether it's van access or parking access. So those are a little bit wider, and the van access areas are a little wider too, but we're leaving those in place. The, the ones that Brennan and Justin have been discussing about narrowing or keeping are just what's there now with the non-accessible parking stalls.
And how many of those would there be?
The non-accessible, I think there's two there.
Two?
There's more than, there's more than.
There's a, there's, this project adds four.
Oh, yep, there's some up on the top too. Four total.
There's four, okay. And then how many spots would that, that's going to take some parking spots away just doing that in itself according to the requirements on this?
Well, it did initially, when you start a layout of the process, and again, our charge was since we were losing thirty to forty in downtown area, we wanted to try to make that up here. So the angled parking really had to go away from what you had before in order to gain. So you, what you do is you start out with how many are required, how many do you want, because those requirements are a minimum. So I see there's four there. We tried to put the accessibility areas where they were at before, so leave them in those same spots. So you start with those and then you lay everything else out around it. So we aren't going to lose any stalls where the accessibility ones are at. Those would stay marked same widths. Everything else would change if you decide to shorten them. If you decide to stay with it as is, they would be labeled as is on the plan. So if I could zoom in there, I, I would show you, but I think they're, they, they are labeled differently on the plan for the accessibility parking stalls.
They asked me to also mention that, you know, as a community, that we are also a retirement community, and to keep that in mind when you're looking at these places, because if they're at ten, they can ease, more easily and readily back out.
Sure.
Okay? And that would make a lot of sense, because, you know, our tourist is here, it's not as extensive year-round as it is the summer months, but our retirement community is always here and growing. So they would just like that to be remembered. Thank you.
As I have a couple of things in my mind, it does seem tight to me too, and I'm not good at backing out myself, a little bit uncomfortable with it. One question goes to John. Has there been any excessive or very many accident reports come from down here with, we're going to monitor that a little bit over this month and a half?
There hasn't been any so far.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, is there a reason we stay parallel parking in front of the Weasel side of Union Street? Or couldn't you put angled parking in there too to get a few more stalls? Your angle across by the library side?
Talking East Union Street.
This is in, I guess I'm talking to Randy.
Yeah. That's what I answered that.
Well, the answer is no. We did check into that, the width, there's just not enough width there.
Not enough width on that street compared to Fulton?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the third question, was there any thought given to one-way? So you're only having one way of traffic instead of two, and you're backing out concerned with being both sides getting whacked?
Yeah.
And why didn't you do that or why, what was the answer?
Yeah, I think safety, a couple of things, not enough room to get everybody in there and just maximize the parking areas and calm the traffic, you know, the slower you have to go, you have to back out a little bit slower, it does seem a little tighter. But this one, maximize those parking stalls. And then the one-way is just the, this, you can, it's less, you know, when you have the two-way here, you have less chance for interaction in your parking routing, and so we wanted to make sure that you had safe parking and slower movements for traffic in here, so. And Justin, go ahead.
I'd like to, well, yeah, because we talked about the one-way, both directions at the very beginning, and we ruled it out fairly early on. It's like Randy, as Randy mentioned, I mean, we can design it to go one way in either direction you want, but that's not going to stop somebody from going down it the wrong way. And then also in the center where the parking lot is, we have that looping, which way did we loop it? We went back and forth and back and forth, and again, you can sign it all you want and make people, or try to make people go a certain direction, but as soon as they don't, then you have the worst-case scenario in front of you. So and then on top of that is, we felt we had enough space to accommodate the two directions in, in all directions and accom, and then also accomplished with the addition of parking stalls, so it just seemed to be the best route.
If you remember when the library and city hall was first built, we had two-way parking, two-way in the parking lot, and that was changed somewhere within the first few years because it really was very dangerous to have the two-way, and we went to a single direction for the parking lot. So that's just a little history.
Has there been any comments from delivery people or trucks that go try to go in there? What kind of negative talk have you heard from them?
I think on the delivery side, you know, it, it will be tight for them to get in here, depending on when, when they come. Typically, delivery trucks come early in the morning or late in the afternoon, so the hope is that they can use a couple of different stalls. So if it does become a problem down the road, which I don't think it will, but if there is, typically in, I'll say the larger cities, what they do is assign an area for that drop-off so that it could be curbside and for a certain, for a certain timeframe, so. But I don't think that will be an issue in this, in this case.
And we, and we've witnessed, I mean, the flower shop, I think is the greatest example, and I think the mayor even saw this as well. You know, the flower shopper, UPS do tend to sometimes park in the lane like they, like they used to beforehand, and cars are still able to get around. We, we have been able to view that, that, you know, if it's parked, if it's being delivered, cars have still been able to get around even if they are driving in the wrong lane. Again, that's what happened before. They still are able to get around the delivery trucks if needed.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got something.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
I've heard from several, and unfortunately, it's all been negative. They're saying things like whoever designed this should have their head examined, and I'm just hearing a lot of bad things, and so I wanted to at least voice their opinion. It's not necessarily my opinion. I'm hoping that when we gain that little bit that you're talking about, that the perception improves and that people adjust to it and they like it, but I, I really hope that we don't have accidents and door dings and people come at us with a lot of negative, negative thoughts on this whole process. I understand it, that we want to gain these spaces, but I haven't heard one good thing about it so far. So I'm, I keep telling them, wait till it's done, wait till it's done, and so that's what I'm waiting for. We'll see.
Let me see if anybody else says.
Sure.
Anybody else? Comments? Okay, Lori.
I want to agree with Eric. I did get more concerns about, of the tightness, and that was beside what I, what I mentioned, and the same kind of atmosphere that Eric was getting, you know, they're just not, not happy with that. And that, you know, and they talk about if it was just a little wider, and I did get one report of a business owner, somebody ramming into another car, backing out and left, but the business owner was able to get the license plate number and give it to the, to the party. So I don't know, okay, I don't know how that is going, if people are just doing that stuff and it's happening and not reporting it, but there is stuff, there is activity. So, and, you know, I've, there was one person that actually lives in, in the county who said that he is, he thinks a fairly good driver and everything, and he was shocked at how close his vehicle came after crossing over, and the crossing over is always hard for him to understand, and he is a very knowledgeable man on rules and, and law.
Mayor? You know, I, I understand that this is uncomfortable for some people. It's, it's a new layout, it's a big change from what we had, but we have our people that know what they're doing saying that this will work in their opinions. This design meets the DOT design standards that they have their experts create. There is nothing that's out of line here legally. Our, all of, all of our experts are telling us that this will work in their opinion. It's not guaranteed that it'll work, but in their opinion it will. And as Scott said, this design maximizes parking spots when Main Street's under construction in a couple of years, parking spots are going to be at a premium. If we widen these stalls to ten feet, there's going to be ten less parking spaces, and that's going to affect downtown businesses during construction. So I think we have an obligation to listen to the people that we've hired and that are on staff, listen to them and tell, and, and take their advice, and this is, I think, personally, I think this is the way we should go. We should keep the design that we have now and, and move forward.
I'm just going to agree a hundred percent with Paul.
Yeah, a question made.
Chuck, go ahead.
Is there any designs like this close by in any other communities we could go test out?
Well, sure, there are, not exactly this. I mean, you have pieces and parts to it, and I think I actually probably parked in one today in another city. So again, we are following design standards, we are looking at DOT standards. There's a transportation and urban parking handbook that we use. The guidance is guidelines, so you can go smaller, like Brennan was saying, longer, wider. You're kind of right in the middle with everything. You're on a twenty-four-foot width. I've designed parking, parking areas with eleven-foot widths for driving back and forth. Not a lot of room. So this is, I'll say, middle of the road, does maximize you, you can maximize it some more, but you'll lose some parking spaces. I don't, can't name one that I could turn you to, but I think I was just in one today in Racine County, so, which is quite a ways from here, but they, they do happen like this all the time, the two-way to the one-way to the circulation. I think the unique thing that you have here is you have extra parking on, on Fulton that's head-in parking, that's still truly traffic on a street. That's unique, and it looks like a parking area. So when it's full, it's going to look like you should slow down, and you should. So that's, that's what you want them to do in a parking lot. So just slow down and park and take your time.
Paul? Nothing? I'm sorry. Lori?
I just wanted to say too that, you know, Paul's, what he's talking about is, is wonderful and good, but we also represent the constituents and the people who are here, and keeping them comfortable is something we should also think about. If ten spots, if that's what it is, you know, is that a small price to pay to, to the taxpayers, the people that we represent?
Alan, you had something?
I was going to make a motion.
Do you mind if, well, you can make.
No, that's.
I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and I wanted to ask Justin to explain to me, to explain to council what you explained to me last week when we had this discussion too about when you do, I want to call it chalk it, but when you want to paint the lines on East Fulton Street, right now they're all at nine feet, well, as good as a smith can measure, but, yeah, they're nine feet. And so when we go to actually put down the official lines, explain that to me.
Okay. Right now, they're black and white lines on a piece of paper showing us that we need to have stalls that are nine-foot by sixteen-foot. We get out there, we're going to pull a tape measure, and we're going to basically find how many stalls we can put within that space. So it may end up turning out that on East Fulton Street, they're going to be nine-and-a-half foot stalls because we somehow gained an extra foot somewhere here and there. a half foot stalls because we somehow gained an extra foot somewhere here and there, but we have to do the layout and we have to measure it off, but in all intensive purposes, they should be nine-foot stalls, per the plan, but we go out there and lay it out, they may end up growing and getting a little bigger, so. I think that's the point, correct you want me to make? So, they may end up being nine and a half in some of the spots, just because that's what fits. It doesn't, doesn't make sense to put nine-foot stalls and have an area of dead space that no one can use.
Okay. And then, a few more comments I wanted to just make. I think it's important that we remember that Union Street will be open along with Fulton Street and Jefferson Street too, and, and right now, Union Street is closed, so it is more of a cluster because you can only go one way. You know, you can't get out and go onto Union Street, so it makes it a little bit more difficult for that. Brennan brought up a point, and I, and I just wanted, he's mentioned this a couple times to me, and I, first time I just blew by it, but the second time I thought about it, you know, quite honestly, we do have alternative parking in, in Willpeck and close to downtown area. I mean, we have the parking on, on Union Street that we're doing, and we're also going to have the parking on Main Street too. So, if you really want to angle park, you can find places to angle park if you're uncomfortable with the straight-end parking. There are areas, areas to park there. And so, I, I think that's important for us to remember that. I got some notes here, so just let me go through this real quick. The only other thing that I, that I wanted to, to bring up to you is, is that with the straight-end parking on both East Fulton Street and Jefferson Street and the, and the library parking lot, which are basically the same thing now, those are all straight-end parking, and it's, it's going to be impossible, almost impossible, for us to change from straight-end parking to angle parking. So, we're going to have to promote it as straight-end parking. It is a parking lot, even though it does say that it's East Fulton Street and Jefferson Street. They are parking lots. I think you're going to see improvements with the foot on each side, so that you'll be able to drive back by further. I, I really strongly suggest that we try to spread it out so that it's not nine feet to wherever possible, and that it's a little wider. And then, if I could make any compromise to, to anybody here, if you look at the layout on East Union Street, which is, which is the angle parking there, that is going to be nine feet. And I just want you to think back a little bit here, okay? Before we had this angle parking, we had back-end parking, remember, on Union Street? And then, I don't want to bring up a sore subject, but I'm trying to come to a point here. Before that, we had angle parking there, and that was nine feet wide, okay? And then, when we went back to angle parking, took away back out parking, we switched it to nine, 10-foot. So, now, if you really want to see a comparison, 10-foot is on Union Street versus what nine feet is on the other side, okay? So, the one compromise we could do is expand Union Street. I think we only lose two stalls at the, one stall, if we make the angle parking at least nine and a half feet wide, okay? And now, when you drive a truck, now, Justin drives a truck like mine, it's a large truck, you know, you know where you're going to park and where you're not going to park, you know? You're not going to try and pull a big vehicle into, well, and Paul, you do too, don't have, you're not going to park your spot where you know it's going to be difficult to get in and out. But if you have options, like Union Street or in front of Main Street, and you don't have to park in those straight-end parking, I think that's going to make a big difference. And I, I got to tell you, I'm down here every day during the week, and on weekends too, but especially every day, these parking spots are being used the way they are now, and it's only going to get better, once it's all taken care of. So, I do have my reservations, but I, but I, I think the one compromise I can suggest is, is that we go to at least nine and a half feet on Union Street for the angle parking, and I think it's going to work. I think it's going to work pretty darn good, quite honestly. People are, have a hard time with change, no doubt, and, and that's part of the issue, obviously, is, is change, as we'll talk about with our next topic too, so. All right. Alan, I don't want to put you off anymore.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we go with option one, maintain the existing common council approval layout.
Okay, we have a motion by Alan.
Second.
Second by Paul, that we stay with option one. Any discussion?
Just quickly, for public reasons, is there, is it illegal to back into those stalls? Some people don't like to back out, so they try to back in when there's a little more room early.
I've seen that.
I know, I think you can pull across where there's facing each other, you can pull, so you can pull out forward either way.
Aren't you the driver's ed teacher?
Yeah, but I. Yeah. I didn't read that in my latest issue, so I was going to ask the expert. Well, before I have people doing it.
Well, I do it.
You're going to cross the center line.
They're doing it.
But is it legal?
It's not striped, so now, you can.
As soon as it's striped.
It won't be striped.
There won't, there won't be a center line.
There's no center line.
No center line, no.
No center line.
Okay.
So, you can back in.
Was that what I mean?
Okay. Any other discussion?
Let's do a roll call.
Sandy says, let's do a roll call.
When, before you do, was, was your motion inclusive of the mayor's suggestion, or is that not applicable?
Not applicable. I'm just going with as written an option one.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to be nine and a half feet on Union Street, so don't worry about it.
All right. Just wondering.
Could you switch it to Fulton?
No. Go ahead, Sandy.
Laurie Chestnut?
No.
Scott Pritchardski?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
And Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you guys for that. Randy, appreciate it. All right, let's move on, then. We have, this is under our issues, project discussions, 30-minute maximum. This is just to talk about, an update on the four-way stop pilot program, and Brennan, you've got your name on this one too, so.
Thanks, Mayor, members of council. So, we just wanted to provide the council brief updates since the pilot project and pilot study is done for the summer. First off, I appreciate the, the council's continued support on looking at different options and conducting the pilot study during the summertime as well. Behind you, just again, looking at a couple of slides, and then Randy can fill in as needed here as well, just talking about the technical side of it, and then, of course, Justin. While the study conducted, so, again, back in 2016, when we started this process, we had to do a traffic study as part of our DOT application for the road project and our SDP urban funding. If everyone remembers, we did receive, you know, funding for about $1.7 million for the project, and throughout that process, we looked at, you know, that proposed plan along with our design exception request that was approved to maintain angle parking on Main Street, included the converting, the four-way stop and go to a four-way stop at Union, or excuse me, at Badger and Fulton, along with Fulton and Main. And then, again, as I kind of previously talked about beforehand, we, you know, we did talk about, that does also propose a four-way stop at the end of North Main Street as well, near the, near the Danes Hall. We did two pilot studies, because last year, we did one in October after the tourism season, and you can see that at that time, we received 288 responses, but there was a concern that we didn't take, we didn't try the, the study during, you know, when the busiest time is, between Memorial Day and Labor Day. So, this year, we did that study, we did receive 364 responses for that, and this was an online survey, along with, we did have a boot-on-the-ground approach here. We did have multiple businesses that participated in that and had surveys on, at their locations, along with City Hall, Library, the Recreation Center, or other locations that people could take the survey as well. These are just kind of the survey results that did the comparison from fall 2017 to the summer of 2018. And again, I think the biggest question, which is the second one, is, you know, has the pilot project to convert the two singleized intersections been a positive, negative, neutral experience, again, in both instances? You know, we have negative experiences, no doubt about that, but if you look at the center one, you know, especially this time around, we had 212 responses identified that it was a neutral experience. Again, we, you know, we have taken comments throughout the project as well, and we will provide those to the council as we continue to move forward with this project. But I wanted just to show a couple, you know, again, similar to what we've heard about, you know, the parking lot project, we do have positives and negative comments that we have received throughout this, you know, process. Again, I think, you know, to the mayor's point beforehand, it's, it's changed, it's different, there's no doubt about that, but I would like at least Randy to kind of fill in from the technical side standpoint of this process as well.
Yeah, I think these responses, when I read them, I think all very fair comments from everybody, because at times during the day, when, when the stop signs or the pilot was in process, you may have some of the cons, the pros as well. I think there's kind of a handful of, of both, so it seems, the comments seem to be real 50/50. Going back to some of the technical pieces though, to, to what we did in the beginning, like Brennan said, we updated and asked for updated numbers and did a, updated traffic count, I believe as of 2017 were the numbers. And those numbers were then looked at per intersection, and are stop signs warranted or are signals warranted at each one of those intersections, just from a pure numbers standpoint, level of service, and the transportation manuals? And at today's traffic, the impacts require stop signs at all of those intersections. However, as Justin and I talked about that even some more, but today, we, we talked about what about in, you know, 20 years from now, or 2040, or even 2045, out, out in the field? Very hard to judge where you're going to be at for more traffic, but if we just strictly forecast it from what standard methods are for forecasting to 2040, they may be warranted at some point down the road, and might be 20 years, it might be 15 years, or you can't really put a good number on it, but if you're continuing to grow and see tourism like we hope you do, they may be warranted down the road. Currently, they're not warranted. So, another piece to this whole project was not just technical warranty of those intersections, but it's also traffic calming, slowing people down, making it more walkable. I think those are all fair options from a non-technical perspective. So, we wanted to really put it to test. You know, the warrants aren't always accurate, or I should say, they're, they're always accurate, but they're not always realistic, so you don't have to use them, they're kind of a minimum standard, if you would say. So, if you're going for a more of a walkable feel and you want people to enjoy downtown and get more people down there, then maybe the feel of the stop signs is better and warranted at this time. So, I think you have to look at the technical perspective versus kind of a non-technical perspective, take the public comments, and you guys, it always seems I'm here to give you some real judgmental ideas, but I think, you know, your, your downtown deserves this kind of scrutiny, and you have a hard job in front of you to help guide us, but I think just getting all the facts out there, you can make good, sound decisions from all perspectives. So, I just want to make sure that we're giving that to you from a technical side as well.
So, just, just kind of the next steps, we're, again, this is under discussion tonight, so, you know, Justin, myself, and Randy are here if there's any immediate questions, but we're not asking for a decision tonight. We will, as Randy mentioned, we will need to provide guidance and a recommendation here in the next couple of months in order for our consultants to continue to move forward. We are on a relatively strict time schedule because of the Wisconsin DOT SDP urban process, but just a couple of dates to kind of put on the calendar here a little bit is, is we are required to have a public involvement meeting with the DOT, and that's scheduled for October 9th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. Again, that meeting will be in conjunction, SCH will be here, I believe, Wisconsin DOT rep will also be here at that meeting, but again, that is going to be a public informational meeting, an open house, so we can certainly talk about, you know, during that meeting, and Randy can go into specifics on what's discussed, but there will be display boards out there looking at, again, the, the traffic counts, what's being proposed here, schedule wise.
Again, at that public information meeting, our, our objective is to not say one way or another that this is how it's going to be, it's to solicit public comment, and for you guys to give public, and hear public comment as well, so we encourage everybody to be there, but we are trying to get the information out to you and others as, as quick as possible, so that everybody has a, a, a good timeframe to review it by. So, like Brennan said, our next step is the public informational meeting on October 9th, which, gosh, it's only three and a half weeks away, so it's not far, we're starting to work on some of those boards right now, and, and one of those options is to have stop signs, and another option is to keep the signals at each one of the intersections you have now.
And then, the next step would be hopefully coming back, we're looking at, I think, targeting the first meeting in November for a recommendation from the common council on what direction to go with for the design, so that, again, SEH can move forward, because we need to get to those 60% design plans by July of next year. So, that is kind of the, the next steps that we're looking at, so we really just wanted to provide a brief overview of the pilot study to date. Again, we, you know, we have heard, you know, people have stopped in our office, again, we do have the surveys. I will get that information out to the common council here in the next week or so. Again, we have all the comments labeled and identified, but I guess if there's any immediate questions or concerns, while Randy or we're here, the same need, we open it up for any questions that the council may have.
Questions? Go ahead, Scott.
Will either one of these stops or signals have a big design change? Is there, we have to decide, and I mean, is, is there some massive change one way or the other for us?
From a.
From one to the other?
From a geometric perspective, the roadway will be the same. There may be some different cutouts and areas and heights of stop signs at, if you choose a stop signs. However, I think the bigger, bigger focus is if you do want the, the lights back in, we'll have to get the electrical drawings put together. Now, you may want to also consider keeping some of the future electrical conduits in an area, so I wouldn't be designing all of the electrical and control cabinets at this time, but we would be holding places for them if that's what you chose to do for later. So, and then we want to, you know, if that is happening, then we want to make sure any of the aesthetics get moved around those poles, and, and so, it's kind of the, the setting that we need to have before we can start moving forward, because we don't want to redo work.
Anybody else? Randy, thank you. Brennan? Thanks.
Thank you.
Before we go into our next item, Justin or Brennan, you want to just explain the, the hours of parking? I mean, everything goes fine, it's striped, we open Wednesday morning at the latest, people are going to park down there, how long can they park there?
What was brought to council, and what we've talked internally, is to keep what East Fulton and East Union at the two-hour parking like it was previously, and the parking lot area behind City Hall and Library would become all eight-hour parking. So, basically, as you left, there's some big old nodes out there, so as you enter into those, that's eight-hour parking.
Okay. And there will not be any signage at this time?
No, it'll probably take us a little while to get the signage up, but we'd still, would like to open it up after we get it striped.
Okay.
Brian, with that being said, how many parking lots are for the city employees and how many will be for the library? Is there anything set up for that?
We have no stalls like reserved for anyone, but how it worked previously was, we just parked on Jefferson Street on the eight-hour parking, it was first come, first served.
Okay. But I mean, now, but that parking lot also serves the library, I want to make sure that the library is going to have sufficient parking for the, for the patrons who come in there too.
Besides?
Besides the city employees parking there.
Well, I, I mean, I, yeah, go ahead.
Well, with that layout, we're adding 30 total stalls, we'd be adding 10.
Have you considered the first row, like for aging, disability, mothers with 10 kids, that type of thing, to get into the library?
Well, we have the handicap stalls there. We have an extra opening, ramp opening there geared towards the library's back door, so there's, I guess there's a little more accommodations for that, but there's no special signing for, like, expectant mothers or anything like that.
Well, we can ask our city employees and our library employees not to park right next to the sidewalk next to the building, so I think that most people are going to be agreeable to that. And that would accommodate?
Oh, yeah, I guess, I think it's kind of well-known not to take the premium spots, just because you're the first one there.
I just brought it up as an FYI, so that we know when you start parking. Because I, if you haven't already noticed, we have not been ticketing people that have been parking on East Fulton Street or in the parking lot, but we will start next week, so keep that in mind. All right. Let's move on then to our closed session. This is a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent 1E, as it concerns the deliberations or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes 19.85, parent 1, parent G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation, in which it is or is likely to become involved.
That's impressive.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into closed session.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Fair, that we go and convene into closed session. Discussion? Sandy, a call roll?
Chuck Whitman?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Wilson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
And Mary Fair?
Aye.